Washington State University Board of Regents meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. We'll begin today's meeting by acknowledging that WSU's locations statewide are on the homelands of native peoples who have lived in this region from time immemorial. The university expresses its deepest respect for and gratitude toward these original and current caretakers of the region. As each of the regions are calling in from across the state of Washington, we appreciate that this meeting is available on a YouTube live stream. So folks that would like to watch the meeting, they can do so with a link which is available on the WSU Board of Regents website. We will allow for public comment, which is always welcome at this meeting at the designated time at the end of this executive session, which we will head into next. The Regents' Executive Session will be held to review the performance of a public employee. The session will be closed. The executive session is anticipated to conclude at 9:30 a.m. this morning unless I make an extended, an announcement about extending the executive session. If any action is taken as a result of these discussions, it will be taken at a following meeting during open session. So with that, I'd like to go ahead and move the Board of Regents into a session with our counsel and President Schultz. The Regents will now reconvene in open session, and we welcome public comment requests that have been submitted. When I announce your name, I will ask that you unmute, and each speaker will be allowed up to two minutes. Do we have anyone that signed up for public comment? Okay. Hearing that we don't have anyone that signed up for public comment, I do want to encourage folks that if you do have public comment, we ask that you send emails online through regents.wsu.edu or by emailing regents@wsu.edu or visiting with the Board's Assistant, Tracy Jordan. All right, so with that, I will now turn the meeting over to Regent Ramos to lead the Finance and Administration Committee discussion.
Okay, thank you Chair Shauer. For the following information item, I would invite Executive Vice President for Finance and Administration and CFO Leslie Brunelli and Assistant Vice President for Business and Planning Chris Jones to present an update on the fiscal year 2025 budget development.
We are running a little ahead of schedule, so I need to give them a prompt. I gave them a 9:30 start time, and I thought perhaps they would join a little early, but let me let, but let me let them know that we're early.
Okay, cool. Thank you, Tracy.
I wonder if we should take a 10-minute break then. Let's go ahead and do that. Let's go into a 10-minute break so that our next presenters can be ready at 9:30. So Regents, if you can just stay connected, but take a quick break, that would be super. 9:30, we'll start again. Okay, it looks like we might all be ready to, to go. See if we've got Regents returning. All right. Regent Ramos, I'll let you start again.
All right, great. Thank you Chair Shauer. So for the following information item, I would invite Executive Vice President for Finance and Administration and our CFO Leslie Brunelli and Assistant Vice President for Business and Planning Chris Jones to present an update on the fiscal year 2025 budget development. Leslie, your charts are up. Can you hear me?
Leslie, can you hear us? I guess not.
I'm right down the hall. Let me check in with her real quick.
Okay.
Thank you.
Regent Ramos, are you waiting for me?
Don't you hear us?
Okay, great. Good morning. I've got it. Thank you. Good morning, everybody. Thank you for giving us an opportunity to provide information on next year's budget, which starts just in a few short days as we're prepping to conclude the fiscal '24 budget. I'm good, yes. All right, can you go forward, Kyle? Thank you. The fiscal '25 budget is slated to be 1.3 billion. Frankly, that's what this current year's budget is. There's minimal growth across all of our revenue sources, including our state appropriation and our tuition and fees. We do expect some additional funds for our grants and contracts, which will likely push up our FNA allocation from the federal government as well. But basically, we're operating on a budget that has stayed very consistent with its prior year. The challenge, of course, is that our expenditures are increasing with inflation and with other needs around the institution, and we'll talk about that in just a moment. The portion of our budget that is our core funds is derived from our state appropriation and our tuition and fees and an amount that comes also from the interest income that we receive on the dollars that we have in our custodial bank and then also from that facilities and administration costs that we collect from the federal government in the form of indirect cost recoveries. But for the most part, because our budget is as large as it is, it takes an awful lot to make these percentages change across the year, and so they are very consistent with what you saw for fiscal '24. If you'd move forward, Kyle. The core funds budget has increased slightly to 659.5 million. You can see again, state tuition make up the majority of our funding. Indirect cost recoveries, we've nudged that up just ever so slightly along with the increase in our grant activity and then our administrative fees and interest. We're being very careful not to budget the the interest income that we are receiving from the bank in a recurring way. One, because we have more dollars in the bank now, we do expect that our units are starting to use those funds, but also we do expect interest rates are going to start moderating this summer and then into the fall. If you'll move forward, please. I'm going to turn this over to Chris to talk briefly about state operating appropriations and the capital appropriations, which are not part of the core funds budget, but really important here.
Yeah, thanks Leslie. So we've seen a lot of success over the past few biennium with increasing state appropriations for our operating budget, increasing over 200 million since the 1517 biennium on a biennial basis. It's important to note, though, a lot of this funding was for specific purposes, what we call provisos, so specific projects. And also, we've continued to have some challenges funding or compensation increases due to the state's use of the fund split methodology, which assumes part of those costs will be paid on tuition. And as you know, with declining enrollments, that's been more of a challenge in recent years. And on to the next slide, please. Also seeing success with additional capital appropriations over the last few biennium. Not funding 100% of our need, obviously, but we do see increasing dollars on a biennial basis from the capital budget as well.
And the challenge here, of course, these are not dollars that are in our operating budget, is that with the reductions that we have been making, frankly, prior to COVID, but certainly since COVID, we are not funding our preventative maintenance nor our deferred maintenance at the rate we would like to. What that's really going to demand in the future is that we look carefully at our space, particularly in Pullman where the campus footprint is so large, and consider ways to optimize that space and frankly, reduce some of our capital footprint so that we are not always struggling to cover needed costs. Kyle, can you move forward? Our core funds budget broken down in the way that we showed you the last time by colleges, campuses, academic support, administrative and finance and operations has changed slightly with the change in the fiscal year. The colleges is all of the academic units, including the three colleges up in the Spokane campus, makes up roughly 49%. That was 50 in the last thing, but there is a little bit of a nuance over in the finance and operations. That number is up, but part of the reason that number is up is we park the facilities and administrative costs there before it moves out to the units. So when research makes decisions about how to allocate that, it will move either to the colleges or to academic support primarily, or even the campuses. Our campuses are largely the administrative operations, except for the Tri-Cities and our Vancouver campus, which that is all of their operation inside that. I'm hopeful that by the next time we show you this, we can explode that piece of the pie out to show you exactly what their budget is in terms of administration, facilities and academic costs. Our academic support area includes the offices that are under our new Provost, Chris Riley Tillman, that is enrollment management, importantly, the Office of Research, international programs, and everything that is the back office for the academic side. The administration is frankly Kirk's areas. That's not just the president's office, but it's the operation of the Board of Regents. It includes internal audit, the AG's office, and marketing and communications, as well as the portion of university development that we fund, not the portion that is over in the foundation. So this pie has remained largely what it was last year, but I think it's important to see this in terms of what piece of the core funds budget the colleges represent. Can you move forward, please? You can skip over this one. This is the budget principles that we had when we met with each of our units, including Regent McDonald. You go forward. And here's really where the budget came together this year. So we did have a 3% tuition increase. We expect that to yield approximately 6 million new dollars primarily from our undergraduate population. But we do expect the overall enrollment is still diminishing from those larger classes that have worked their way through. We also offered some new waivers primarily to non-resident students. If we had not made additional non-resident waiver offers, we expect that the budgeted enrollment reduction would have been more. So we're hopeful to see new students who will pay us more. What this 2.5 million does not represent is any growth in the undergraduate population, so we have the budget coming in even. Seichy continues to report that he believes that we're going to be up in our first time first year class that comes in August, but we don't want to have a budget that captures those dollars before those students show up. The challenge also is that while we expect the first time first year class may increase this fall, we do know that our transfer population is likely to dip down. We have not seen growth in the transfer numbers, particularly those students who come to us from the community colleges around the state. So that may offset the gain that we see in the new freshman students. We also need to be very mindful of retention from the freshman to sophomore, sophomore to junior, and junior to senior years, to make sure that those numbers have held consistently across the term. So I'm hopeful that we'll see some growth in that 2.5 million, but we did not budget that to be on the conservative side. The next line below that is the allocation that we made from our own units. So you'll recall that we asked each of our units to visit us and tell us what the impact of a 1%, 3% and 5% budget reduction would be. We went through all of that information with the units and we ultimately reallocated 5.5 million from our units, which is just over a 1.6% increase or a decrease of their budgets. You'll see how that fits in there. The sum of that 5.5 million reallocated across our units and the 2.5 million in tuition gave us $8 million to allocate across the budget. Remember, our budget was $650 million for our core funds. This is a very small piece that we have to spend on new initiatives. With the new initiatives that were received, you'll step below the line. We had more than $45 million in new requests for new funds. We could not fund anywhere near that amount, and I do think that units came to us with discretion. It was not a Christmas list. It was not all of my hopes and dreams captured in budget form. But there were some great ideas in there, but there were also some very thoughtful discussions about how they can become more efficient and what dollars they need to sustain their current operations. Of the nearly 45 million, we funded 16 million, or we recognized that 16 million needed to be funded, but of course, we only have eight. So we had to close that gap through other allocations in the budget process. We've moved 1.9 million of funding requests out of the core fund budget from tuition and fees over to the facilities and administrative costs. That includes our Office of Research needs to support our faculty who are research intensive, but also things like environmental health and safety, which includes lab cleanouts and some of that back office work. It's also funding our sponsored program support, so the backend for the host award for our faculty, to make sure that we are drawing the dollars frankly, from the federal government in a consistent and timely way and reconciling that information for our faculty. Some of the items that were funded, we reduced. So we had requests for something and we said, we love that idea. We want to fund that, but we cannot fund it fully. So we made about $3.4 million in reductions to the request and said, we're going to start funding, but we can't give you everything that you asked for. And then finally, some of the requests we funded in a one-time way with some of our funds that we have received this year from our interest income, we've decided to make those funding allocations on a non-recurring basis. The challenge with those, of course, is that if they continue into fiscal 26, we will have to have a recurring source for that. The largest single item in that one-time funding is for Phil Wyler's area to fund the BBK research that was done so that we can do additional marketing for the institution. So that's something that we frankly have kicked the can to next year. But with all of that work, we brought the budget down to zero and have the budget fully allocated. Again, I'm really hopeful that I see you in September and say, enrollment's up, tuition is up, and therefore we have some additional funding that we can perhaps alleviate some of these one-time funding needs. Any questions about that before I go forward?
Leslie, this is Doug. Excuse me. When would we expect those enrollment numbers to come in?
Really Doug, the challenge is while we can see students who are in orientation, and they are today, I passed a whole bunch of them on the way in. We know who's done our housing application and we know who has confirmed that they're going to be here. You don't know until you know. We really don't know until bills go out and the money starts to come in and we see what housing is. You know, our students are not making a tuition deposit any longer, so it's easy to multiple accept, and that happens across the country now, particularly with students who fill out the Common App and they receive multiple offers. And this year, of course, FAFSA information came out so late that students are continuing to weigh their financial aid officer. So of all the years, this is one that I think we will know it in August and we will know it as that 10 days pass, the first day of class. We can really see what our enrollment looks like. So it's a challenging time. And of course, if you can imagine, if you're on the academic side of the house and you're trying to plan classes around that, that's tough because you don't really know what your enrollment is until they're here and they're paid. I hope that's helpful.
It is. Thank you.
Any other questions about this before I move forward?
I don't, it's not a question, but I just want to emphasize again, the state operating appropriations have increased significantly since 2015, and we're going to talk about it later, what our request will be for the next cycle. The question that comes up often is, are we back to levels of 2008 appropriations? Or pre-2008? And so I'll ask that question a little bit later, but if you're out and about in your network, just thanking our legislative partners is a good thing. It's a little more reliable in terms of forecast, but I think we just want to understand that context a little bit better, too.
It's a good question, Regent Ramos, and I'm not sure that Chris will be able to answer that right off. I would say it would be interesting to see not only the amount of appropriation in terms of dollars, but that number from 2008 adjusted for inflation forward, because I'm confident we fall short of it if it's inflation adjusted. We may be there in terms of the wrong number, but not an adjusted number.
They've also made some changes to the way the state allocates some stuff, and they move pots around, you know, from pre-recession to today. So you've got to be a little careful about comparing apples and oranges on some parts of that, and Chris can give some historical context to some of where that is. So I don't worry so much about frankly, what it was in 2008, to be honest, because it almost doesn't matter. It's what can we do now with the current set of elected officials to continue to make sure we're optimizing and bringing the very best ideas forward to the legislature and then successfully getting them across the finish line? So it's a great question. I'm not sure it matters a lot. Besides, if it's much bigger, we go, oh, it's great. If it's smaller, life has also changed a little bit, but that's a good question, and I know Chris will be able to help.
You know, I appreciate that. Looking forward is really important. It's a question that's come up from the community, so thank you for that.
I think Regent Shower, you have your hand up?
I have a couple of questions that I'm interested in your feedback and Regent McDonald's feedback. In terms of the previous slide on budget development guiding principles, and then the success is challenging as this budget is, there was a real reliance on not every group that provided input on the budget receiving the same reduction. So some of the criticism that I think we've heard in the past is that everyone took the same, you know, amount of reductions and the thought and the strategy around each of those budget hearings and the time commitment to go through each of those budget hearings. From my perspective, looking at this yielded some pretty significant results so that we were able to create a balanced budget without everyone, kind of an equality, you know, approach. Everyone takes a certain number of, you know, percentage of reduction. Instead, we're trying to really understand what each group needs and try to meet them there. So I was curious first as to whether or not you could provide some feedback on how those budget hearings went, and President Schultz, your input as well. And then secondly, how salaries may factor into this final operating budget that we're looking at.
Regent McDonald, would you like to chime in? I'm afraid we can't hear you.
Well, while we're waiting, I can give my perspectives. I think I appreciate Leslie, Chris, Matt, and the the Finance Administration team, the way they kind of assembled and put everything together. And I thought, you know, Lisa, you mentioned it's a lot of time and effort, but this is really important to a lot of people. So I just think it was, we did budget hearings several years ago. Leslie and that team reinstituted those, but I think reinstituted them with the sense of there is going to be some differences coming out, and even though it's not reflected necessarily in the slide, there was real attempt to minimize the impact on the academic student-facing units. And I think that going into this, I expected that the reductions by the units were going to have to be much more significant. And I think I just applaud the Finance Team for being creative and others on finding ways to minimize the impact on units that have seen pretty continual decreases. At the end of the day, most of our colleges took a 1% cut, which it's a cut. We would like to be investing instead of cutting, but it wasn't quite the 6% that we did last year. So I just want to, you know, we can talk about it's a really tough budget. I would say of the budgets for the last several years, this one came out better, I think, for a whole lot of units than we thought it might. Administrative units took a higher percentage cut, and I think that was needed. But, you know, at the end of the day, it also means those units that took a higher cut, there are certain things they're not going to be able to do moving forward. So it's easy to point to somebody else and say, well, I'm sure it didn't really hurt over there. It was a shifting, but I think it refocused around some of our key academic and research needs for the institution in a really good way. So I look forward to doing it again next year and also in continuing to maybe do it earlier and improve upon it and figure out ways to give tools to deans, chancellors, vice presidents to continue to reinvest some of the dollars they have in real strategic needs. So that's my comments, but Leslie and her team really did a nice job putting all this together.
Can you hear me now?
We can.
Okay. I thought for me personally, it was a really good experience. I learned a lot. It was really neat to learn about sort of all the different budgets we have, the things we do. I also would applaud Leslie and Chris and Matt for a really thoughtful structure for people to present to us. I also like Kirk's suggestion that we're going to give more guidance to our leaderships on how to make these kind of decisions. We saw a real variety of what people would do with the budget cuts and why. And so I like the idea that we're going to give our deans and administrative leaders a little more guidance and training on how to make these kind of decisions. But overall, I feel like we did a really good job. I was as happy as could possibly be so with our final decisions because it was so complicated. The other thing that will happen this year, I think, is the message has also gone out to all those other administrative leaders to be, we did the big picture budget. Now each of those administrator, each person has their own budget to map. We didn't tell a dean, do this, don't do this. We told the dean, this is your budget, but we did give permission to the deans to say, be thoughtful about how you invest your money. You don't have to keep things consistent or do across the board. Or I find that messaging very valuable as well. So overall, great experience, great sort of initial setup for how we were going to do things and lots of learning as far as how do we improve moving forward.
Thank you both for that. I think it's really important what Regent McDonald just said. We're not telling the deans or telling the vice presidents how to make their reductions, and frankly, they did their work at the end of February and the first of March, and we had our hearings in the month of March, but things have changed between March and now. And so I think the way some of the units were approaching their reductions is shifting, and it's going to be important that we go behind folks as the new year starts and make sure reductions are being made. Because the worst thing that we can do is allow recurring structural budget deficits to be in our place. We do know that there are some already. We've got to get a handle on that. We, we've got to get a handle on that because that is the surest way to, to run through cash and cash in units where cash may not already be there. So we do have to follow up on the backend and make sure that the reductions really are made. Um, we talked a little bit about the, at the retreat about this, you know, some of the the way we had to approach the, the fact that these reductions are not being made across the board this year. A lot of our budgets are sort of historical artifacts of what they've been previously and you know, I wouldn't suggest that the university needs to undertake a zero-based budget exercise. That would be maddening to try to do everyone at one time, but we can do it in, in places. We have to make sure that we're funding what we expect to be doing for the institution because that just frustrates faculty and staff if we have grand plans to do things and we don't put the resources behind it. So there's, there's really some need to have a reckoning in this budget while it was a struggle to get it met and I'm, I'm really proud of how we got there. I think the bigger work is frankly in next year. If we look at um the academic program review and the administrative view, review, knowing those may not be completed by the time we get into budget development for next year, at least we're on a start to, to doing that work.
Maybe, maybe just one last comment. Um, you know, proactive fiscal balancing has been a lot of hard work. At total level, this is a balanced budget. But underneath it, just so all of our regions understand, there's a level of accountability at each department, each dean level where they all have to ensure that they're not overspending and that uh, that's a, you know, uh, details that Leslie and her team just continue to do uh really well. Uh, but I just want to emphasize it takes everyone's teamwork and I appreciate President Schultz and Leslie's leadership on uh just financial health of the institution.
Thank you, Regent Ramos. We'll be talking a lot um with our units this year about executive policy one, which is the budget responsibility, which is laid out beautifully of how to manage the institutions finances and what our expectations are. Kyle, can you move forward? I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time in this next series of slides. They're there for your information. This slide shows you with the same um uh, structure as the prior, what our core funds budget was for fiscal 24, what percentage that is, and then where we made the reductions. Now you heard me say our reduction is 1.6%. All of our core funds are not reducible. So a lot of our core funds are from the state appropriations where things are on under proviso or things like our utility bill, which, you know, we can cut it, but we're still going to have to pay a vista. So it doesn't make sense to have that in the base where we're doing reductions. Overall, for the core funds budget, the reduction is 0.86%, so it's less than 1%. Kyle, can you move to the next slide? But here's where you can see of the amount of the budget we can cut, it was really the 1.61. So we protected all of our units, um state appropriations and um their uh F and A and the interest income. What we were looking at really was the, the state portion that can be cut and their tuition and fee. So of the portion that could be cut, it's 1.61%. I also want to be careful that we don't ever say the word, it's only this much of a reduction. That 5.5 million is individuals. It did not take long for units to, to approach staffing and this is the week when much of our staff that is being eliminated is going to get noticed of that. So right now, I think the number is somewhere between 12 and 15 staff. We of course had the earlier reductions that had been announced from athletics. I think at one point we had known that there were about 30 people that were going to be eliminated for this time. So I want to cautious us all, caution us all not to say it's only a $5.5 million reduction. It is individuals. And that, that's a challenge. Can you move forward to Kyle? Um, uh, the president mentioned this, what we were trying to do is really reduce the element, the make the, the reduction to our academic units as small as possible. And so the greater reductions were made in the administrative units. There are dollars that came back in though. I'll point you to the recurring GA column. You'll remember we received $2 million in one-time funding from our state. We had to find 2.33 across the institution to fully fund the graduate students at the level that they were in the prior year. So those dollars have been moved out. That does not mean that every academic unit will have the same number of grad students. Partially timing, we did not notice the grad, the, the units that they could hire their grad students early enough for them to make those offers and get acceptances. But also because some of our units have structural budget deficits and it is still in their best interest to not fully fund grad students and reduce that. In many cases, we are still staffed in a way that supports our enrolled population in 2019 and 2020. We have 5,000 less students than that now and need to make um allocations that make sense for this student population. You'll see that we did fund some new dollars. Those items total our state appropriation and the amount that we reallocated in some of this one-time funding. In the academic support, 1.5 million of that is for enrollment management. They were the only unit again this year that did not receive a cut because we know that we have to support that revenue stream that's coming into the university. Still with 1.5 million and not having been cut, Seiji's group is going to have to figure out how to do some things a little bit differently because that's not enough to continue to fund them in a way that is sustainable. Under finance and operations, there's a, a big increase. Part of that is F and A, but part of that is also for utilities. Um, I mean, excuse me, um, facilities. We've recognized that a lot of our goods and services that we provide through facilities have been increasing. Some as much as 40%, including paper goods like toilet paper, paper towels, that sort of thing. So we did fund that in the budget. We've also put 500,000 into human resources. Um, that's a unit that has been operating in a budget deficit for several years and we're trying to get them back to a place that is sustainable. Even with it, an infusion of 500K, they still have to make some significant reductions at the human resources office. So all that together, you can see how we brought this budget forward. Kyle, can you go forward for me? That's it. This one. Stay tuned. How are we going to do this next year? Um, it's pretty clear that um the regents are interested in approving this university's budget before it goes out to the units. I think that's a really critical next step for us. The challenge is going to be building the timeline in a way that recognizes our units have work to do. We need to do the hearing process. But this is also the year of the biennium coming forward and that typically is not resolved until late April or early May. So we have to figure out how to build our budget around that information, plus getting your approval, plus getting our units to be able to rationalize their, their budget requests in terms of both the administrative and academic program review and what we have going forward. So we're starting to build that calendar and we'll be back in front of you to show you what that might look like. Um, one item may be that your last real regents meeting is in the month of April. That might be a little bit too early for us. So we'll have to consider how to bring that forward to you in a place that makes sense. And that's really all I have for the budget. Any questions about that? All right. Thank you all.
Laura, Laura's got a question.
She does. Okay.
Okay, so um one of the things um that I've been hearing particularly among units that have um um, science units that have labs and so forth that need to be covered by graduate students. And at the time I heard this, they were, there were major cuts to grad students because of the unionization and increased salaries. Has, was during your process and, and looking about allocating funds for graduate student support, did you take a look at that? Because you know, there are some, some of these classes that with labs are required by a lot of different majors. So people were in angst.
Yeah, I understand that. And, and again, I think the timing was one of the challenges because typically I think they notified Judy will know this better than I in February, March for the following year, and we did not know what our budget situation was going to be. We did fully fund the need for grad students. So with the 2 million from the state and the 2.33, it is fully funded. But again, it is the unit's decision where they apply those dollars. So across arts and sciences, for instance, they're working in a structural budget deficit. They may have decided they need to have less grad students and need to do some combination of classes and labs so that they're better meeting their budget, but also meeting the students' needs for those classes.
So, okay, as Leslie mentioned, a, a challenge for graduate student recruitment is there's an agreement sort of nationwide that everybody gets their offers out in spring and then April 15th is the universal date for which students have to accept or decline offers. So one challenge for units is we missed it, the April 15th and pushing it out. As Leslie mentioned, we push the money out to the colleges. What the deans do with that money is it's in their budget now. They need to decide how to best allocate that funds and it may or may not all go to graduate students.
I think we're, we're very aware of that deadline coming for the next year because we won't know the results of the state budget process and we will be in the middle of our, our budget process. So again, this can be a challenge next year and we have to be thoughtful about how we build the budget development calendar to make sure that we are providing the support for grad students that we need to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just add one more um comment that uh, I, I think you mentioned this, Leslie, the board is looking to approve the budget. And so we are interested in making sure that there is a a schedule that allows us to remain focused on this area and um and that we are showing up in a way that uh allows us to feel comfortable throughout the year through this process. I really appreciate all the work that has been done to get to this point and um and I think that there's still a lot of work yet to be done. And so as you mentioned, um, the groups, colleges, programs that perhaps are um maybe not able to meet a balanced budget, that there's good plans in place to help them to be able to achieve that. Um, we tend to focus on one specific area, but it's of interest to me that we're ensuring that all areas are being looked at and being held to the same level of accountability. So just appreciate uh the team's uh deep dive and um the transparency with the board and our ability to help support the decisions that need to be made. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you Chair Shower and Leslie. There are four action items before the board today. For our first action item, the athletic budget transfer for fiscal year 2024, Leslie will be joined by Assistant Vice President for Business and Financial Services and Athletic CFO John Harlow and Inter Mathetics Director Anne McCoy.
Actually, I believe Anne is unlikely to join as she is away um from campus right now.
She's at the Olympic swimming trials, if anybody is curious, so.
Yeah. All right. If you don't mind.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I will say she's not just attending, she's watching her son compete there. Uh, she just texted me, there's 20,000 people there watching our prospective uh team compete to qualify for the Olympics. So it's a pretty big deal, really neat opportunity for him to be there, for her to be there as well. So so you're stuck with me, I guess. Long, long story short on that one. Um, but on that note, good morning. Good to see everyone. Uh, as you all are aware, at the conclusion of each fiscal year, state law requires that the university clears all non-core cash deficits to zero. As a reminder, this is a manual procedure. On June 30th, University of County performs a journal entry, moving an amount of non-state, non-tuition funds to balance the cash deficit in athletics. They then perform an additional journal entry the following day on July 1, restoring the deficit, ensuring proper record keeping and tracking of money owed to the university. You'll notice in your packet that as of today, we're projecting the operating cash deficit to hold flat for FY24. However, as anticipated, the year-end transfer amount has increased from last year to this year. This increase is caused by the spending of our restricted donated capital dollars on the projects for which they were given. Those large cash balances aided to offset our year-end transfer amount these last few years. As a final reminder, the year-end transfers based on cash balances that are taken at a single point in time. Because of that single point in time snapshot, there are sometimes fluctuations in those balances on inflows and outflows caught between fiscal years. So as you see noted in the document, you have a conservative buffer built in there. You'll see that with that conservative buffer built in, the amount that we're requesting to transfer is not to exceed 88.4 million. We ask your approval to perform this transfer so we can properly close out FY24 on June the 30th. Happy to answer any questions around this.
I will say the most important thing that, that we can highlight from this presentation is that the deficit for athletics did not grow this year with the dollars that we received from the, the conference, from the settlement, we were able to keep that even, which was a, a really important um item for one, our fiscal health, but also for the discussion on the campus to, to keep that under control.
Any other questions on this? Okay, are there any objections to moving this item to an action item? No objections? I move that the Washington State University Board of Regents approve transfers necessary at fiscal year 2024 year-end to cover the deficit balance. Is there's?
I wish to, I'll just chime in here real quick. I just want to note for the record that it was decided this item would be presented as an action item rather than a future action item in accordance with the Board of Regents bylaw two period 12, period B. Is there a second to the motion? Second, thank you. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say a yay.
Yay.
Raise your hand. Any opposed? All right, hearing none, motion passes.
Thanks Chair Shower for that recovery. I got ahead of you there. Okay, to present the next action item, the Faculty Practice Plan. Leslie will be joined by WSU Spokane Chancellor and Executive Vice President Daryl DeWald, Senior Associate Vice President and Deputy CFO Matt Skinner, Executive Director for Policy and Governance Daniel Hess, and Dean of Elsen S Floyd College of Medicine, Dr. James Record.
Thank you, Regent Ramos, and I'm going to defer to Daryl DeWald. You will know that we brought this item up to you earlier in the spring. Um, the challenge that we have with a, a separate 501(c)(3) acting on behalf of the institution that is not in a financially sustainable place to continue its operation. And so the recommendation has been to move that into the university to provide more oversight and guidance for the financial operation. But there is certainly more to that. Um, and I will defer to both Dr. DeWald and Dr. Record.
Thank you, Leslie. And just a reminder that in March of 2017, the regents approved the establishment of a faculty clinical practice plan with our fairly newly established College of Medicine. And at that point, it was established as a separate 501(c)(3). But would today, we're bringing forward now the proposal for action uh that uh the regents would approve a restructure of the faculty practice plan. And that that would be moved underneath a College of Medicine that does require the 501(c)(3) to go through a set of uh actions uh before that would occur. What I would like to do is ask um Dean James Record to go ahead and provide a little bit of insight in regard to the benefit to the College of Medicine and potentially the benefit to uh Range. And Jim, if you'll remind folks that the name Range Bobby, because that has been asked again this morning. And uh what it means, are they the same? Are they different? Thank you, Jim.
Uh, appreciate that. And, and I think that uh speaks to the challenges of the origin of this from a marketing standpoint, but uh uh bold, audacious, visionary and innovative were um uh the uh words used to describe the start of the uh college. Uh, and it was taken as an acronym for this technically uh separate 501(c)(3), but frankly, the control element always was remained with WSU and the College of Medicine with a dean as a chair of the board um and WSU maintaining um the hiring uh through its HRS. So it's always been intimately connected with the university. Um, and for us, it was uh a key part of the origin of the college. Uh, frankly, it is something that is uh expected of a, a College of Medicine. And without a health system, it always uh creates some challenges, both with uh hiring as well as from an accreditation standpoint. Um, where we're judged uh uh like uh with one standard that applies um and uh by most uh places who have uh a health system uh with a practice plan. Um, for us, having neither has, has certainly been a challenge. Uh, and it's created some uh issues with our um accreditation uh status, including with our student health uh concerns. And I'll just remind uh the regions, while we've had outstanding results uh with our graduates and the development of our G And I'll just remind, uh, the Regents, while we've had outstanding results, uh, with our graduates and the development of our GME programs. We are also on, we are fully accredited, but on warning for some of the process elements from an accreditor that is known to be, uh, one of the more challenging and has called out, uh, our provision of, uh, healthcare as a concern. Um, and our student satisfaction has reflected some of the challenges that we have, uh, which is in some ways an ironic, um, uh, problem because we were created because of the healthcare deficits and it's one of the challenges we have moving forward. So for us, uh, having a practice plan actually is an important part of capturing, uh, more of our faculty and being able to provide some of our student rotations. If you've read the news, uh, over the last few weeks, you know that, uh, Legacy and OHSU, um, have formalized what was expected when they announced last year, um, a relationship that, um, we're hoping doesn't significantly impact our Vancouver operations particularly, uh, but puts out, uh, at risk. And so, you know, for so much of the healthcare, uh, education that happens on the outpatient setting for us, having a faculty practice plan where we would have an ability to create some of those, uh, experiences for our students can insulate us against some of the challenges we have relying on partners, uh, who unfortunately don't always have, uh, education that is the forefront of their, um, priority list. And, and we've had a number of challenges, uh, each year in trying to, to manage that. The challenge, of course, from a standpoint of range is that without significant capital, we'll start this up, it has been a challenge. And so, you know, for us, we've looked at this as, um, you know, in the, in the year forward, uh, looking at some of the deficits we have with an Autism Spectrum Disorder Clinic, a speech and language pathology clinic, uh, and these are two clinics that are primarily, um, set up through our speech and hearing sciences, uh, program. And particularly the speech and language pathology clinic is one that is required, uh, for experiences for our students. Now, the, the challenge there is we are running deficits, uh, that and projected deficit, uh, in the coming year of, um, about 800,000 for the ASD clinic and about 400, um, plus for our SLP, uh, clinic. So it's pretty clear, uh, you know, for us, we needed to change our operational strategy. So, uh, we've started, uh, with a number of, uh, different items, including restructuring the clinic's schedule. We are in the process of some due diligence to change the models, uh, to make sure we are, uh, more appropriately sustainable in the future. But, uh, it does raise some very challenging elements, uh, that, uh, really, um, touch on what the, we will discuss more strategically across the university and strategic programmatic review. But for us, what we know is that, um, we have an opportunity to, to make a, a substantial difference. You know, in a number of different areas, but don't have the funds to fully sustain that. And so what we know the likelihood is with our, uh, Autism Spectrum Disorder Clinic, we will be likely needing to, uh, change the model significantly, um, to be able to make that work. The SLP, uh, uh, the Speech and Language Pathology Clinic is another challenge that we are reviewing models to make that more efficient. We have suspended some of our operations in our mobile units. We have two mobile units. One is in Spokane, the other is in Tri-Cities. We've held off on moving forward with most of the, uh, uh, work on the Tri-Cities, uh, sadly, because we just don't have the funds to move forward and couldn't afford to do that until we have a more sustainable model. Uh, so we are working now to create that. We are still, you know, one year out from starting with, uh, some of the challenges and reimbursement that frankly are, are, uh, still fairly fluid, so it's hard for us to predict exactly. And, um, you know, for us, uh, are looking, uh, to be more, uh, tied into, uh, the university and to also be able to leverage, uh, some of the benefits of being attached to the university, including for faculty hiring and the connections and the savings that we would have, uh, for us. Uh, so I apologize for going on too long. There are a number of other elements, but there are some benefits to being part of, uh, the university, whether it's leasing on the property of the university, whether it's having our faculty, uh, who are going to be able to practice and teach onsite, uh, that will allow us to be, uh, more financially stable, uh, over time, but happy to talk more about that in detail and answer any questions that you have.
Laura has a question.
Yes.
Hi Jim, um, I have a question on the accreditation. Are, is there any difference to the creditors about either having it set up as a nonprofit or in-house? And what's the common practice?
So for most medical schools, uh, it is a non-for-profit entity, but it's a, a full, uh, fully fledged health system. So including hospital, uh, as well as outpatient practice, uh, and that's the, the standard, as our accreditor likes to say, there's only one standard, um, as she told me directly in my last meeting with her. And so for us, uh, we have to be able to deliver. So when they say you have to deliver healthcare to students, the expectation is that you're doing it as everyone else who has their own healthcare system. So the fact that we have deficits in Spokane for getting, uh, uh, appointments in some cases for some specialists that last over a year. You know what? That, that's our problem, as the accreditor has said. So this is one of the reasons we started a student health clinic on campus, uh, in the past year is to cover that deficit and it's in preparation for a site visit next February, um, that has significant impact, um, for us frankly. Because we've been on warning for this, we need to demonstrate that we've had substantial, um, improvement in that delivery.
And Laura, if I could add just a little bit too, so, uh, Range has been providing student health services, uh, uh, to try to meet this, we need to probably make some structural changes to that to bring them on board. But that is one of the highlighted accreditation issues. It has helped with medicine. It's also helped with nursing and pharmacy.
And I'll just add one other item too, is that as we look at this, we have a board, uh, for Range that includes pharmacy and, uh, nursing and the expectation as we move to an operational model, we will have an executive team that does the same to make sure that we continue to maintain an interprofessional focus, uh, and, uh, a, uh, an educational framework that, uh, supports, uh, all three of the programs themselves.
Jim, I have a question. Um, these two clinics are obviously serving a need, um, but they sound really financially at risk. Is there a chance they'll be closed?
There always are, are a, a chance of that, um, frankly, um, but uh, from the ASD side, no surprise, even some of the larger health systems in the state have had the same concern. For us, we've had partnership outreaches from some of those, uh, trying to figure out a way how we might do it in partnership, uh, which we would certainly be, um, you know, amenable to. It's just, uh, the reimbursements are generally so low for these that it, it makes it a big challenge for us. So definitely possible. Now, the trouble with, uh, SLP, the speech and language is that's a requirement. So if you're going to close that, that, that risks the educational program. And then if you look at that, well, if you're going to do that, you still have to teach out. So that benefit you can't even realize in the short term. It is a long-term with obviously significant impact forward, but, um, none of the short-term benefits that you need to create the benefit, uh, financially right away. So that's why I had mentioned, uh, these are strategic questions we've really got to address. You know, when the College of Medicine took on both nutrition, exercise, physiology and, um, speech and hearing sciences from the graduate school, they were both in deficit, uh, annually. And with speech and language, uh, there's this other challenge at the clinic. So it really puts a, a focus as we look at sustainability forward is, um, how we're going to do this and where we might do investments to expand a program or, you know, uh, look to figure out what the options, uh, might be otherwise, and that includes closure.
Thank you.
Dr. Record, um, I think I understand the context of the requirements, the sensitivities around accreditation and services, um, and the history of this to where we are today. I'm just curious because you gave a couple of figures with regard to just, to, to deficits, so about 1.2 million in deficit, but what, what's the order of magnitude, the cumulative financial impact of Range operations that you look to, uh, be part of the WSU institution?
Well, if, if we look at where our projected deficits, it's about 1.88, uh, million in, in, in this year. You know, it, for us, you know, you look at that as a percentage of the overall, you know, it's little over 1%, right? But, um, you know, I, I think the, the challenge for us, and I'll just give you an example, like with how we might restructure ASD to create a less physician-dependent, uh, team and double effectively our evaluations. We have a chance to, um, you know, double our, our reimbursement, uh, potentially, but it's still, uh, would only at this point, if we look at where we are, still only result somewhere around 600,000. So it still doesn't fully, you know, manifest the, uh, the needs to, to cover the deficit.
But to operate Range, it's about a 2 million annual operating budget. Is that?
It's closer to over three, actually three, um, and a half.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Three and a half annual operating funds needed where it wasn't being provided in the nonprofit, the 501(c)(3). So by putting this with WSU, the sources of funds will be, uh, I guess planned by WSU. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Leslie, anything more on that?
I don't think so. Um, Matt Skinner has spent a lot of time working with Brett Oglesby, who I believe is also on the call. With the, the finances, I don't want to put Matt or Brett on the spot, but is there anything that you'd like to add there?
Thanks Leslie. I just recognize, um, Brett, who's the Area Finance Officer for the College of Medicine as well as Dan Denike, who's the Vice Chancellor for Finance Administration in Spokane Campus. The three of us have been working very closely on this. And certainly as we look at bringing the 501(c)(3) into the university, understanding those forecasts for the expenses and potential revenues and understanding that burden that will come to universities is very important. And I think we're calibrating around that really well. We'll also do something very subtle, which is changing the fiscal year back to the university's fiscal year of June 30th. So you see that in your board materials, trying to transition the conversation back into the university's fiscal year. So we're all planning around the same, um, timeline, which is a small thing, but it makes it easier to translate those numbers back and forth as we're planning. Overall, as you saw in your materials, I would add, um, they're forecasting, uh, a net deficit for fiscal year 24 for the year ended June 30th, 2024 of about 600,000 in range. And that's after some funding support that's been identified by the university in the Spokane campus to help with their operations during fiscal year 24.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, so thank you for that, uh, overview. It's, it's complex, it's important, and it impacts people, uh, both in our institution as well as those that we serve. Um, so with that, this is an action item. I move that the Washington State University Board of Regents approve the proposed plan to restructure the Faculty Practice Plan for the Elson S Floyd College of Medicine and delegate authority to the president or designate to take action needed to implement the restructure contingent on the completion of any prerequisite internal and external processes and due diligence steps.
Is there a second to this motion?
A second.
Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none. And given the virtual nature, if you could just raise your hand, either physical or, um, if you could raise your Zoom hand, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? Okay, seeing none. Isaac, I'm assuming that was a okay, uh, seeing none, uh, motion passes.
Thank you. Uh, and, and thanks again, Dr. Record and Dr. DeWald. For the next action item, the licensing agreement for WA64, WA64. Leslie will be joined by Chief Compliance and Risk Officer Cheryl Chemerzal and the Director of Innovation and Commercialization for the College of Agriculture, Human and Natural Resource Sciences, Jeremy Tamsen.
Thank you, Regent Ramos. I am going to immediately defer this over to, to Jeremy to have a discussion about this. And many thanks to Cheryl for working with them to get this ready for the board's review.
Absolutely. Thank you. Um, so my name is Jeremy Tamsen. I am the Director of Innovation and Commercialization for the College of Agricultural Human and Natural Resource Sciences. And I met some of you before when we spoke about the Cosmic Crisp Marketing Contract back in 2022. And today I'm here to talk to you about WA64 as was introduced. So this is just to give you a sense of what this apple actually is, in case you have questions or want to discuss it with folks in the industry or with your friends. This is a cross between Honeycrisp, that was the mother or the flower, and Crips Pink or Pink Lady, that was the pollen. So this is an apple that is in general smaller than Cosmic Crisp. It has some, the firmness of the Pink Lady parent, but it's much more crisp and juicy, given the, uh, pairing with the Honeycrisp parent. So I actually have some, it's a little bit of a shame that this meeting is not, um, in person right now because I have the rare sample apple right now. Um, these are, uh, some apples that went down the commercial packing line to give it a test. After they went through a storage quality test. Um, and the good news is that they're, they continue to test very well in the commercial setting. And, uh, we have growers and packers and, um, products producers, applesauce makers, juice cider makers that are very, um, excited to have this new apple as part of their offerings. So, uh, this is just to give you a sense of the work that has gone into this release so far. So the cross was made way back in 1998 in Wenatchee, um, and we've been testing it ever since. We have what's called the Cultivar Licensing Committee that we work with on apples and cherries. So this is a group of industry representatives that provides industry feedback to us about apple releases and apple commercialization. And we formed that group and we've been leveraging them, um, over the past couple of years to guide us through this process to get us to the point where we are today. Part of that process was putting out an announcement of opportunity for the opportunity to license this new apple. So that was done in collaboration with the WSU Office of Commercialization. And we analyzed those responses and with the guidance of the Cultivar Licensing Committee, we selected the International New Varieties Network, or INN, to proceed with negotiating a commercial license agreement. Working carefully with Cheryl, our Chief Compliance and Risk Officer, and, uh, our State Attorney General's Office, we now have that license agreement almost completely negotiated, uh, with the third party. And today we're asking for the Board of Regents to delegate the authority to the university to sign that license agreement. So, um, one, one thing that you may have heard about, uh, with respect to this apple is that we've held a naming contest. Um, and we received over 15,000 suggestions from the public, uh, for the name for the next apple. So we're carefully working through those suggestions and we plan to announce the final name selection in mid-August. So if you hear, if you've heard about that, or if you have, uh, conversations about that, know that the results of that contest were, um, were very, uh, overwhelming. And, um, we are working our way toward the, uh, final name selection. So the reason for us asking for this authorization is because although we are not sure, because we're working on projections, we imagine or we anticipate that this contract will exceed the $5 million contracting authority that's been delegated to the university for matters of this type. And really, this is a short and sweet presentation. I imagine you might have some questions for me, but I didn't want to overload you with a lot of information on the slides and would rather just discuss it with you if you do have questions. And like I said, I wish I could give you a bite. It's quite good.
I have one question. Who makes the decision about the name?
So what we've done is normally the apple breeders would make this decision. But recognizing that we have this opportunity of public exposure ahead of the commercial release, ahead of any need to advertise the apple, we wanted to leverage that opportunity. So the out of the 15,000 names that were submitted, each of the two apple breeders, Kate Evans and Bruce Barrett, who were involved in this variety, they each get five selections. My office gets five selections out of the Connors Office of Research, and then the Office of Commercialization gets five selections. We'll then run those through some very specialized research tools. And with a list of no more than five, we will run three focus group studies to to help us land on the final name.
Regent Powell?
Okay, my question is around the 5 million. And as I read the the notes on this, it it looks to me like the 5 million is income, not outflow. That correct, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, sorry. I should have made that more clear. You're absolutely correct.
Well, it was it was fairly clear, but I guess what confuses me is that usually when we're asked for that on contracting authority is because that's what might cost us as opposed to the income. So I just wanted to, I wanted to just make absolutely sure. My other question is, it sounds to me like this actually forms a separate niche for apples as opposed to Cosmic Crisp, or, you know, is it? How do you see this in the whole realm of competition between two of our apples?
Oh, as between the two WSU apples? Well, that's a good question. You know, we've had explosive uptake with Cosmic Crisp, 22 million trees planted in Washington, and a big industry has grown up around that. That represents around 3% of the total Washington apple production, just over 3%. So the way that I see it, for comparison, Red Delicious is still over 30% of Washington State production. So the way I see it with these new varieties that we have coming on that have these exceptional consumer characteristics, we have a lot of headroom to grow into, a lot of headroom to displace other varieties that are still in high production, but maybe have fallen out of consumer favor.
So you think it likely won't replace part of the Cosmic Crisp market? Because I think one of the reasons that Red Delicious is so popular is not only has it been around for years, but it's also quite cheap. And Cosmic Crisp, the prices have come down tremendously. I remember when I was buying some for like $3.50 or $4 a pound when they first came out. Just just, I guess my only concern was making sure we weren't putting another apple in that cut into our our profit share.
That's a very good question. I mean, the bottom line is that the two apples differ quite dramatically in end user quality, both in size and shape as well as in texture and flavor. We do, I understand your question definitely, but we do see this as filling a different market than the Cosmic Crisp does. Thank you so much.
What, I just one quick question. So would this be cheaper than a Cosmic Crisp apple?
Well, that will be shaken out by the financials in the industry. One big reason why Cosmic Crisp has come down so much in price over the last two years or even over the last six or eight months is that the apple industry is extremely depressed. They grew way too many apples in 2023. And while that sounds like a good problem to have, you have to store apples in refrigerated storage in order for them to be worth anything for the rest of the year. So the apple industry is highly depressed right now, and we're not sure, you know, what the uptake is going to be or what exact, you know, numbers we're going to have for plantings. But we're hoping that we do have good uptake. We do have a lot of folks that are indicating interest at this point, and so we're hopeful that it's a strong product for us.
Okay. Without any other hands up, I move that the Washington State University Board of Regents enter into a license agreement for the commercialization of WA 64, WA 64's newest apple variety, and delegate authority to the president or designate to negotiate and execute the contract.
Second.
Great. Speaking for Chair Shower, that was our second. Any further discussion? Okay, those in favor, raise your hand or say yea. And
Hey.
Hey.
Those against?
Hi.
Do I seen against their Regent Lincolnship? Okay. Okay. So I think with the majority, we move forward. Thank you, Jeremy, for the context and the story behind the new apple.
It's my pleasure. Thank you for having me today.
Okay, for our final action item, 2025-2027 Operating Budget Request. Leslie will be joined by Vice President for External Affairs and Government Relations, Glenda Becker-Fenter. This item is being presented as an action item and is recommended for action by the board today.
Thank you so much, Regent Ramos. And I'm going to actually defer to Glenda to walk us through the request. I think we set it up nicely, though, with the budget discussion, particularly for additional dollars to support our salary operations. And actually, I'm going to ask Kirk to step in here at the beginning to share the context that he has gained from the Washington Council of Presidents.
Yeah, thank you. The Washington Council of Presidents, which is the six presidents of the public universities in the state of Washington, you know, are having some pretty active dialogue around, we all are having salary issues at each of the six Publcs. So the things that we're hearing from our own faculty about salary compression and not keeping up with inflation things are also being echoed at all the other public research universities or public universities in the state. So one of the things that we're talking about is, you know, what kind of strategies we might want to move forward with, particularly around the fund balance conversation and how we are engaging with the sort of business community writ large in the state to work with the legislature on these types of things. And I think the the last meeting, and I think Chris and Glenda were there as well. You know, one of the things we want to talk about broadly moving into the fall is what does the business model look like for public higher education in the state of Washington? It's easy to go just on the fund balance, but we also have a, you know, tuition policy that has been put in place for quite a while, but doesn't allow much flexibility to the universities. We've just got several items that all kind of come together that really make the salary issues that I know the Regent's heard about in the listening sessions and others just increasingly challenging to deal with. So I I think we're going to continue to look philosophically what the six universities can do together from a policy a point of view, keeping in mind that the legislature is going to hear lots of requests on things that need to be done. But I think this is a broader picture approach that is going to be needed to make the fundamental changes needed to ensure that the state is just supporting more fully, you know, ensuring our employees are appropriately compensated. So that that's where we are, and Chris and Glenda may have their own perspectives. They, we were all in the same meeting together on what that looks like moving forward.
Thanks. Are you are you ready for me to go ahead and go through all these then? Okay. And I just, I'm Glenda Becker-Fenter, and I also want to make sure you all folks know that Chris Mueller, our Senior Director of State Relations, has also joined us this morning. I've asked him to be a part of these conversations because he's leading the day-to-day efforts for us in Olympia. I also want to give a shout out to him. He's been very thoughtful and involved with the Council of Presidents from the legislative side of things to move forward with this collaborative agreement that that I think our presidents across the state are trying to get to around compensation in particular. So we have five items to present to the Regents this morning. The first is around compensation. And again, we are going to be looking at doing these in a way that is consistent with the requests from our sister universities around the state so that there we do not have an actual dollar number in here. This present, the the actual percentage number will be determined around the time before the time of submission to the governor's office, which is September 10. So we will have paperwork going back and forth that will outline this. It will be with the goal of it being consistent with what our other institutions are doing. And this will also include language, we're hoping to to close what we've affectionately called the fund split, which is where WSU is responsible for part of the the direct funding for compensation. We're having the same challenge with our academic student employee contracts as well. So the request in this increase will be to ask the legislature to also close that fund split so that they are making the full investment in our faculty and our staff at WSU with the compensation improvements. Our second request will be around the academic student employee bargaining contract to ensure that we are fully funding that request. As Leslie mentioned earlier this morning, we were able to meet that request. But WSU had to be, had to make some of that investment on our own, and we're hoping to reach back and ask the legislature to move forward with this and fully funding our graduate students. And this will be a priority for us. So side note, it is very interesting to watch as our other institutions in the state, the public ones, are watching how we're handling this because their student, their graduate students are starting to enter the collective bargaining agreements as well. And third will be a request to fund ongoing accreditation efforts with the College of Medicine. This is a $3.6 million biannual request, and we are working directly with Dr. Record and Executive Vice President Dewald on this request. The fourth is to make permanent the Native American Scholarship Program that the legislature funded last year. That will be a 2.2 million biannual request that will serve our native students across the system at WSU. And the final is a 1 million biannual request for maintenance and operation to continue funding our new Schweitzer Engineering Hall under under construction at WSU. This process wise, these requests have gone through review through our previous provost in Leslie Brunelli. We have made these recommendations up to President Schultz, who has approved these recommendations for us to bring them to you for final approval going forward. Again, I've asked Chris to join me today. So if we have any questions about strategy going forward and how we hope to implement these once, once you hopefully approve them, we'd be happy to entertain any questions you might have. Thank you.
If if I could comment too, thank you, Glenda. As as we, Chris and myself and Glenda and others, you know, start working these with our legislative colleagues, we, they are in priority order. I think that's always important, and we don't shift the order based on who we're talking to. I think it's important for our faculty, staff and students and alumni and everybody else to sort of see what are key things. I also want to just applaud our government relations team working with Leslie and their team on improving our process. These are not just random. We have lots of great ideas that come up through campus. We actually have a process. And one of the things that Leslie and her team has really worked on is to say, if through our budget hearings, we're identifying some key strategic areas of the university that need further investment moving forward, we need to make sure we're tying those in closely with what we're asking the legislature to do. And if somehow they're not strategic or it's not the kind of thing that we can really find other ways to do, then we have to question, should we continue to do those things? So I think we're starting to pull all the strands together between our budget hearings, what we need to do with the legislature, key strategic items for all of our campuses together. And that just makes a stronger package moving forward. We also don't have 15 items or 20 items on this list. And I think that's also a key strategy piece is go in there with a fairly focused list that is in priority order, and it's worked really, really well during my tenure as president. So anyway, I think it's lots of work has gone into getting it to this point. And I, and I think we've got a really, it's a heavy lift. We're going to have to do a lot of work to be successful, but all of us need a challenge, so.
Any other discussion or questions?
Chris, you you got it. You can't be silent the whole time. I'm not going to let you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Regent Ramos, to answer some of your previous questions about state funding, we were at about 510 million per biennium pre-recession. We fell to a low point of about 300 million per biennium. And we're at now at about 659 million for the biennium. I will note that we do a lot more things now. So that includes new medical school. It includes a new campus in Everett. And, you know, and there's other, you know, investments in there in terms of even even partially funded coal is a really expensive maintenance level costs around, you know, healthcare benefits and other things. And and there's a million caveats, as Kirk alluded to earlier, but the, I'm only going to call out one, and that is that the state has also put a ton of money into state-funded financial aid, which shows up on our books as tuition. And so not even calculated in that is is what you're seeing in in financial aid.
Got it. Thank you. That was helpful. I guess my my, I do have an additional question, and that's really around communication. Once again, this is a very complex process, a lot of effort, thought, strategy. How is that broadly shared so everyone really believes that, you know, this is our best foot forward? And it takes the whole community to help?
That's a really good question, Regent Ramos. And one of the things that Chris and I are going to be working on this year is how we ensure that our faculty and our staff are engaged in this process. I know that these are some of the same priorities that they share just from talking with Faculty Senate and having those early conversations. Once these items are approved, we will circle back with the colleges and the projects that were not moved forward this year, and we'll continue to work with them to look for potential other opportunities down the road. And then Chris and I will get together and start to think about how we can strategically utilize our best messengers, which are our WSU colleagues here. One of the projects that we're going to be working on in External Affairs and Government Relations over the next year is how we best and better communicate what we were doing early on through the process so that there is more buy-in from the beginning to the end of the process. I've said this a lot, but I think we spent so much time talking, talking internally after COVID that I feel very strongly that this office needs to continue to be talking externally and outward outwardly so that we are able to have our colleagues on all the campuses understand the services that we can help provide them, whether it's through the processes for state and federal requests or whether it's through having there be an understanding of how those processes are developed. So I look forward to to following up with you on that as these communications lanes get set up.
Okay, great, thank you. Just one more check. Are there any objections to moving this item to an action item? Okay, so again, speaking for Chair Shower, I wish to have it noted for the record that it was decided that this item would be presented as an action item rather than a future action item in accordance with the Border Regents Bylaw 1112B. Okay, and I'm wearing two hats today, so I'll keep on speaking. I move that the Washington State University Board of Regents approve the 2025-2027 biannual operating budget request, and that the board delegate authority to the president to approve the final request and any adjustments that may be needed prior to the submission to the Office of Financial Management, including development of additional decision packages if required to address strategic needs. The delegation of authority would be contingent upon the final request being presented to the full Board of Regents as an information item at the September 2024 meeting.
A second.
Thank you, Regent Dickinson. Any further discussion? Okay, those in favor, raise your hand. Thank you. And those against, say nay. Can't see hands down, so that's great. We can proceed with that action item. Thank you so much. With that, that concludes our action items for the committee today. Just want to thank everyone again for all the effort in preparation and getting to this meeting. I know it takes a lot of your time and your volunteer time, so thanks. The Board of Regents meeting is now adjourned.